Hearing will include Columbus League Council's Health and Human Services, Finance, and Workforce Development Committees. I'm Councilmember Priscilla Tyson, and I chair those committees. Before we begin, please be aware that this hearing is being recorded for rebroadcast on CTV, the Columbus Government Television Channel 3. The rebroadcast schedule is available at www.columbus.gov. Tonight's hearing is one in a series of bi-weekly committee hearings that I hold in order to review the legislation in the committees that I chair. And again, those include Health and Human Services, Finance, and Workforce Development. The goal of these hearings is to promote transparency and provide an opportunity for city residents to learn and speak on legislation that impacts their lives. There will be on occasion when a committee is not covered because legislation is not always scheduled for each committee. The intent of each hearing is to review legislation that will be on the city council's agenda for the following two weeks. Tonight, we will hear information on legislation in the Health and Human Services and Finance Committees. Legislation presented will be on council's agenda on either October 26 or November 2. We have several speakers on the agenda this evening. The first will be Christopher Long, who's the Fiscal Manager of the Finance Department. And then we'll hear from Melinda Frank, the Income Tax Division Administrator from the City Auditor's Office, the Income Tax Division. And then Nancy Bechtel, who's Assistant Health Commissioner and Chief Nursing Officer for Columbus Public Health. I will begin with legislation and finance by asking Christopher Long to provide us with updates on legislation from his department. Good evening, Christopher.
Hi, Councilmember Tyson. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
Great. Let's see. First up is Ordinance 2579-2015. And this is an ordinance really on behalf of our Real Estate Management Division. They have a web-based real estate database system that's called Lease Harbor. They've had it for a number of years, and this would be an annual renewal of a subscription-based service for $23,000, basically to allow them to continue to use this database. What they do is they house all of our real estate assets and all of our leased properties in this database, and it automatically sort of calculates square footage, current asset values, location, number of occupants. And they use that not only to sort of manage the real estate assets, but they use it for insurance coverage purposes as valuations change and things of that nature. So it's something they do every year, and this is the annual renewal for that.
Thank you.
The second ordinance is Ordinance 2592. This is legislation that would authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract with Robertson Construction Services for the construction of the new Fire Station 2 on East Fulton Street. This is being administered by our Office of Construction Management, which would be funded via public safety capital dollars. The cost is 8.9 million. And there are a couple of things to note on this. Essentially, the first two bidders, for instance, Altman was the lowest bidder technically, but they actually withdrew their bid. Gutnik, the second lowest bidder, actually, they did not acknowledge some of the addenda that were attached to the bid specifications. And this is worth noting because I talked with our Office of Construction Management, and I asked them what does that mean essentially. And according to advice from the City Attorney's Office, there are certain addenda to bid specifications that they deem material and some that they deem immaterial. Material addenda would be things that could potentially affect the bid price. And so in this case, there were addenda attached to the bid specification that Gutnik did not acknowledge, was part of their bid submission. And so the City Attorney's Office essentially said this is a material issue with respect to their bid submission. And so the Office of Construction Management deemed them non-responsive, Gutnik, that is, which sort of got us to the third vendor in this case, which would be Robert Robertson Construction, who was responsive technically and had the third lowest bid at 8.914 million. So that's something a little different about this ordinance that I wanted to at least discuss with you.
And I appreciate that you're sharing the information. And I know that the Office of Construction Management is -- I appreciate they're giving you the information about a material addenda and then the immaterial addenda. And I think it's helpful that things that are immaterial, and I'm just going to ask that as we continue to move forward with the Office of Construction Management and this issue around the addenda, that we -- I don't know if there's a listing of here the material and here the immaterial, because that would be helpful, I know, to me, if they have something of that nature. Because I know that we've had other legislation that certainly where the addenda has come up. And I know that -- I just want to be consistent in, as we look at this different -- the legislation with the addenda. And so if you could have the office share that information with my office, I would really appreciate that. And I guess, and I think even sharing with the viewing and listening office about the addenda, I know that, that, I think in this particular case, the addenda has other items that need to be a part of the bid. And if someone doesn't acknowledge the addenda, then of course, we don't know if they have that in the cost that they have submitted to us. And that's the importance of it. And so I appreciate that what was put into this bid, in regards to being material, were items that we needed to make sure were a part of the bid. But, so I do appreciate you sharing that. But I also, again, would like to have the other, what they see as immaterial and what they see as material would be great.
I'm happy to make sure they provide that to you, Councilmember Tyson, not for this bid specifically. And then also, I'll speak with our team internally to make sure that future legislation outlines, if that's okay with you, what was material or immaterial about addenda if this comes up again, so that it's in the body of the ordinance for you.
Thank you. And I know that all this has been, with the changes of the bidding process, and there's a lot for the individuals who are bidding our jobs to be able to submit within their bids. And so I know that, and I also appreciate that when you're having the meetings with the individuals who are possibly bidding on these contracts, that you do go over, I know, all the specifications. But again, because I know there's so many documents sometimes that the contractors don't necessarily submit everything at the time of they submit the bids.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you. But let's talk a little bit about what's going to be at this great fire station.
Yes. Well, essentially, what we're doing is, let me just flip back here so I can speak to it. This new fire station is going to replace the old Fire Station 2 at Fulton. And essentially, at one point in time, Fire Station 2 and 3 kind of became a joint location. And as you know and support it very much, we have a new Fire Station 3 that's come online recently. And so this Fire Station 2 now, the construction of it would give our public safety, especially the Fire Division, two new fire stations, 3, which is recently constructed, and then now Fire Station 2. It'll be located at the same location as old Fire Station 2 at 150 East Fulton. And the new station will just be constructed on that same site after there's been a demolition of the old location.
And this contract includes a demolition, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the contract will include demolition of the current fire station to prepare the site for new construction. It's nice, it's going to be a LEED location, so it's going to be energy efficient. We're doing our very best to make sure everything new, in terms of new construction, is LEED certified. So we're happy to say it'll be much more green and energy efficient in terms of its plumbing fixtures and HVAC and water use, and also just the new types of energy efficient windows that we use now.
Yes, and that's important because as we're building new buildings, we want to make sure that as we commit it to our residents that allowed us to have a tax increase, we're going to always make sure we're looking to be able to save money, be energy efficient. And this building will help us to reduce our operational costs by being a LEED building. And I appreciate that, that's always a focus for us as we're building new buildings. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our third ordinance is Ordinance 2622. And this is the establishment of a universal term contract, but it's sole source in nature, specifically for Nexplanon, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, which is essentially a contraceptive product that will be used by our Columbus Public Health Department. And so this was and is an ordinance and a UTC that's been a partnership between our Purchasing Division and our Columbus Public Health Department. It's, like I said, it's a sole source, which essentially means that Theracom LLC is the only entity that actually produces this, as you know. And so this is a universal term contract for that.
Thank you. I don't know if, Nancy, you making any comments about this Nexplanon, the implant, you making comments about this?
Certainly. Thank you, Councilwoman. So Nexplanon is a long-acting reversible contraceptive, and it allows women who don't want to get pregnant to have a good option for maintaining their reproductive health. We know that babies are born healthier and moms are healthier if pregnancies are spaced two years apart, or if a woman has a pregnancy when her body's really ready to have that pregnancy. So in the case of younger teenagers who are sexually active and don't want to get pregnant, we would recommend some type of birth control. So this is one great option that we're able to provide at the Health Department for women who want it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh, Councilmember Tyson, I had one actually additional ordinance.
I'm sorry, Chris. I know. Since you --
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And since Nancy was here, and I thought because she could speak to this legislation, that's why I had to just add it to what you were saying. But now we're back to yours in finance.
I'm sorry, I was a little too eager.
Okay, thank you.
The final ordinance we have is 2674. And the only reason I jumped in there, you were kind enough to allow us to have a sort of a late addition to our agenda tonight. And it's Ordinance 2674. And essentially, what this does is it allows us to modify a contract with Mullen Weifman. And Mullen Weifman provides architectural and engineering consulting services to our Office of Construction Management. The technicality is that this contract is funded by multiple city departments, Finance, Public Safety, Public Service, and Technology. What we found is through just a routine audit of our POs, is that when we were processing vouchers, the way the purchase order was set up is that we were processing vouchers and the wrong dollar amounts were essentially coming off of the wrong lines or funding sources of the purchase order. The vendor got paid exactly what they were supposed to get paid, it's just that the wrong funding sources were being pulled to pay certain invoices. And so what this ordinance would allow us to do is to modify the existing contract to put more public safety money on the contract so we can do expenditure corrections. Essentially, other departments ended up using funding for public safety services that weren't. So this allows us to correct that and get the right funding back in the right lines on the purchase order.
You're saying other departments were using the public safety funds?
Essentially, what happened was we want to add more money to the contract with public safety dollars because essentially Finance and then Public Service and Technology were paying essentially for public safety projects than when they shouldn't have been. So we want to restore their funding.
Excellent. Okay, just some corrections. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is going to be Ms. Melinda Frank from the City Auditor's Office. Good evening.
We have three pieces of legislation that we're speaking to this evening. The first is Ordinance 2551, and it deals with the contract related to obtaining the 2015 income tax returns that will be sent to our active income taxpayers for the filing of their 2015 returns. We did put this item out to bid. We had only one bidder respond. Our numbers in this area are getting smaller and smaller as more and more people are filing online, using electronic method, or going to the computer to pull the forms down off of our website. So we're finding that we need fewer and fewer forms to send out to the actual taxpayers. So the value of this contract is $20,875.16.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions with regard to that?
No.
Okay. The second piece of legislation is 2552, and this is a renewal, a second renewal in a three-year renewal period for an original contract that was entered into with Continental Broadband Pennsylvania, which is doing business as expedient data centers. They serve as a host for our online e-file, e-pay application for individual taxpayers. They provide hosting, maintenance, security, all of that. And this is, again, for another contract period with them. We will have one more renewal period available to us following this year. So far, during the life of the contract, we have expended $50,659.50. This term, the cost will be $16,886.50. And that $50,000 includes this current obligation for the upcoming contract that will expire in 2017.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions on that legislation.
The final piece of legislation that we have does not deal with the expenditure of funds, but rather the collection of funds, and it is Ordinance Number 2658. And it relates to the enactment of a new income tax section within the city charter. We are proposing the acceptance of new Chapter 362 Municipal Income Tax. This is because the 130th General Assembly passed amended substitute House Bill 5, amending the language of the Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 718 Municipal Income Tax, and mandating that the provisions found in that chapter, as amended, be adopted by municipal corporations imposing an income tax and that such be effective January 1, 2016. And this is in relation to all municipalities within the state of Ohio. All have to adopt this language by January 1, 2016, or be barred from administering their income tax. So without the adoption of this code, we would not be able to continue the collection and administration of our tax in 2016. The provisions of this ordinance relate only to income tax accruing on or after January 1, 2016. Taxes which accrued prior to that date will be administered pursuant to the laws of the City of Columbus and the state of Ohio in effect prior to January 1, 2016. That incurred after January 1, 2016 will be governed by this code. For this reason, it is necessary to retain the current Chapter 361, dealing with municipal income tax, and to adopt an additional code so that you can run the two codes concurrently. With the statute of limitations that would be in effect for the tax periods prior to 2016, there will be up to nine years of period, nine years that the old law could apply. So we'll be running these codes concurrently for up to nine years. It is important to note that this code will not be applicable to the filings that we receive in 2015, only for liabilities incurred after 1116. However, we will see a reduction in revenue in 2016 due to some of the changes found within the bill and that are now found within the proposed code that we are asking you to adopt. There is a change in the casual entrance provisions, the calculation of corporate net profits, a change in the method of offsetting, an elimination of the payment of any tax due that's of $10 or less, as well as a projected increase of refunds from non-residents working outside of the city for businesses whose headquarters are located in the city. We will have additional revenue loss starting in 2017 as a result of a net operating loss carryforward provision that will be initiated at that time. It is a five-year net operating loss that will have a gradual application, or only 50% of it will be in place in 2017, and that will run through 2023, at which time there will be a full net operating loss for a five-year period. Entertain any questions that you may have with regard to this.
Okay, first of all, so at this point, we don't know how much money we're going to lose. Is that correct?
Well, in some respects, we do know with regard to the taxpayers not making a payment of $10 or less, we ran numbers, and for 2014, that equaled $84,000. But with regard to the net operating loss carryforward, no, because the City of Columbus has never had a net operating loss carryforward, we won't be able to even estimate what that could be. The casual entrant language has been changed from 12 days to 20 days. This would mean that an individual working in the City of Columbus for 20 days or less would not be paying tax to the City of Columbus. Previously, or the current law states that individuals who work 12 days or fewer do not pay tax to the City of Columbus, but on that 12th day, they owe tax from the 12th day to the first day, and then going forward. So at this point, we will be losing not 12, but 20 days of tax from the income earned by those individuals.
Okay, so we know that we're losing what were 12 days, and now it's going to be --
Twenty days.
Well, we were receiving, if they weren't over 12 days, we received all the dollars.
Right.
Now, it doesn't, the 20-day rule doesn't even go back to the first day. We're losing all the 20 days.
Correct.
So that's going to be a significant loss. And then, as you mentioned, beginning in 2017, we will allow a five-unit operating loss to be carried forward. And so that means we will be have the impact of losing additional dollars there because typically, what was it, what has it been typically?
Well, we never have allowed net operating loss carryforwards. If a business had a bad year and had a loss, they owed no tax. If the following year, they had a net profit, we collected tax from them. So in the years when they had a bad year and they had a loss, they weren't paying for any services or anything that they were receiving from the city, we did not collect anything from them. Now, if they have a bad year, then they'll be able to carry that bad year over into a good year following within the next five years, so that that will reduce or eliminate any tax that they might have paid to us during a profitable year.
Again, that's another loss of income for the City of Columbus.
Additionally, and I forgot to point out, that there is, we will be losing funds as a result of the offset that will be allowed against corporate net profit. And this would relate to the method of calculating what is permitted to be offset against gains that are realized within the City of Columbus by a business. Previously, or current law provides for the taxpayer to offset any losses that take place within the City of Columbus against gain earned within the City of Columbus. With the code change mandated by the legislature, the City of Columbus will have to allow losses that take place anywhere, not just within the City of Columbus, against City of Columbus gains, which probably, in most likelihood, will result in eliminating any of the taxable gain or profit that would be realized by the City of Columbus.
So again, so if someone is in the City of Columbus and they have an income tax gain, but yet they have a loss in California, they can use that against the City of Columbus?
Correct.
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 So again, additional loss of income for the City of Columbus.
Yes.
Looks like the only, the other change, too, is going to be to the appointment of the local Board of Tax Review.
That's correct. Presently, the board's makeup was left to the Income Tax Division at this point with the new code. Two representatives on the board will be appointed by council, and one will be appointed by the mayor. I did want to say that there will also be another change that will impact our taxpayers in the City of Columbus, that the taxpayers, if their refund is $10 or less, it will not be issued to them. So individual taxpayers will not receive a refund if they show something due that is $10 or less. Currently, it's $1 or less.
Okay. And so the change by House Bill 5, basically a loss of dollars for the City of Columbus.
Correct.
And the only area that there was even appearance of any overpayments would be income to us. Is that correct? So basically, all of it's a loss of income. There is where we're looking at Columbus is not required to issue refunds of overpayments that are $10 or less. And in 2015, in 2015, for the 2014, 444 refunds in the amount of $10 or less were issued for a total refunded amount of $2,337.25. However, though, with this change, no remittance is going to be of tax required for taxpayers filing a return that indicates a liability of $10 or less. And so for us in 2015, for the 2014 year, it would have reflected a total of $84,000.
Right. That would have resulted in a loss. Had this been in place in 2015 for the 2014 tax year, our loss would have been $84,000.
Right. So, and so even looking at those to the offset, you still will be looking at $82,000 of loss.
Correct.
So, and so this will take effect, as you said, in January of 2016. And again, we can, we will be running these concurrently until, for nine years. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. And so all the other changes that, well, the rest of our tax, the tax code, will remain the same except for this amended version. Is that correct?
The tax code that's in effect right now will be applicable for all prior tax years, excuse me. Then the tax code that has implemented the language of House Bill 5 will be in effect only for those tax years that involve liability incurred after 1116.
Okay, thank you. Well, I tell you, I wanted to say thank you. I know this isn't, first of all, this isn't good news for the City of Columbus, for sure, because we're, but we have to comply if we want to continue to be able to receive income tax dollars. But I also want to thank you personally, because, Mindy, I know you have been working over the last, I know, two and a half or three years on dealing with House Bill 5 and trying to make it more amenable to city governments. And I just appreciate your work. I know from being on the board of the Ohio Municipal League, they also truly appreciate all the work that you've done in helping to speak up in regard to municipal cities and what was important for us in terms of income tax. So thank you very much for your work, and thank you for presenting this information in this hearing tonight. We have also made, spoke with the council offices and shared with them that you are willing, if they have additional questions regarding this legislation, that you're willing to come and meet with them and share with them what the new changes will be in terms of our municipal tax.
Absolutely. I'd be very happy to do that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And our final presenter this evening is going to be Ms. Nancy Bechtel, representing legislation from Columbus Public Health. Good evening, Nancy.
Good evening. Good evening again, Councilwoman Tyson. So we also have three pieces of legislation to put forward tonight. The first is Ordinance Number 2613-2015. And this ordinance is to authorize our Board of Health to accept $4,000 from the Ohio Commission on Minority Health for us to host some minority health local conversations during our Minority Health Month. And so it's, the award would be for the period of July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016. And our work around these funds will help us to have some community conversations as we're working to eliminate the differences in health status between racial and ethnic minorities and non-minority populations, so that we can have conversations with the residents to see what specific needs and health needs they have. These dollars will allow us to gather that information and to do future planning with our Office of Minority Health.
Thank you. I do appreciate that. I know that we also, we're receiving a couple different grants, I think my last few hearings, from the Office of Minority Health. And I know that also the Department of Health certainly is, through the, is a major funder of the Office of Minority Health. And, but I do appreciate us having these conversations with the community, because it's always good to hear what their thoughts are about their health and what we should, could be doing, what they could be doing differently with the assistance of Columbus Public Health. So look forward to hearing the results of those conversations.
So we'll definitely be publishing when those conversations are happening. And we always encourage the community residents, residents to come out and be a part of the conversations.
Thank you. And just allow, and let us know, too, when you're going to have them so that we can hopefully announce them from the floor here. And so to encourage more people to come out to those events.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The second piece of legislation is actually a contract modification with OSU Hospital, and it's Ordinance Number 2492-2015. So this contract, laboratory testing and diagnostic services are done for our clients that have HIV and AIDS in central Ohio, and it's done as part of our Ryan White Part A HIV care program. The Board of Health previously entered into a contract with OSU Hospital for outpatient ambulatory laboratory services in the amount of $6,000 for the contract period March 1, 2015 through February 29, 2016. Also previously, Ordinance 1911-2015 authorized a contract modification of this in the amount of $370,000. It was thought that additional dollars would be needed, and there was some timing factors with the grant. It was determined, however, after passage of this ordinance, that this amount was more than necessary for these services, and the appropriate amount should have been $140,000. So the ordinance here tonight is needed to repeal Ordinance 1911-2015 and modify the contract with OSU to the amount of $140,000 so that the total contract with OSU Hospital will not exceed $146,000. These services were advertised through our vendor services in February 2014, according to bidding requirements in the city code.
And so the question, so we'll repeal this contract and then have a contract for the $140,000, and then the $370,000, those funds just remain with the Health Department?
Yes. And I, I, I'm not over this particular grant, but I think there was some change in the grant fund allocation as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
And then the last ordinance here tonight is 2648-2015. And this is a grant that we've been awarded from the Ohio Development Service Agency in the amount of $22,000. And this is going to also help our HIV clients. The project associated with this grant is titled "Eliminating Redundancy and Closing Gaps in Linking Patients to Care." And this $22,000 grant is going to allow us to implement a lean quality improvement program and tools that will reduce costs, streamline workflows, and reduce waste, in turn, which will improve our services to HIV clients. And if you've ever done any lean quality improvement work, the lean concept is really focused on fixing processes that aren't working right and serving customers.
Excellent. So that there's, so as you're serving these, our clients, then you will look for, are there gaps, if there's something that needs to be changed, so that they can get all the resources that they need to continue to move forward with their lives? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes. About 1,500 clients will be served directly under these $22,000. But the processes that we learn from going through this will improve care that we're able to give many more clients in years to come as we do this work.
Thank you. I'm excited that you've received this grant and look forward to our pay, the, our HIV clients that we serve getting the resources that they need to be, to continue to live healthy lives. Thank you so much. Is there anything else you want to share with us, is that from the Columbus Public Health Department that, that our viewing and listening audiences need to know about?
I think I would share two things tonight. So thank you very much. We are having a syphilis epidemic, so we are encouraging people to get tested. If you're sexually active and you're not sure, we encourage you to get tested. The other thing is, is it's flu season, and we're already off to a vigorous start with flu infection. So we would really encourage people to get their flu shots.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that with our viewing and listening audience. And, audience, please take heed to the, to the message that she just shared with us. So with that, thank you so much, Nancy. Thank you for joining us for, and presenting the legislation this evening. So we don't have any speakers this evening. And so with that, I hope this evening's hearing has provided insight into the programs and community initiatives from Columbus Public Health, as well as ordinances in finance and from the Auditor's Office that are necessary to support our ongoing city operations. As residents, these hearings are an opportunity for you to learn and become engaged in issues that are presented. Before we conclude tonight's hearing, again, I want to thank Christopher Long, the Fiscal Manager for, for the Finance Department, Melinda Frank, the Income Tax Division Administrator from the City Auditor's Office and Income Tax Division, and Nancy Bechtel, Assistant Health Commissioner and Chief Nursing Officer for Columbus Public Health. My fellow council members and their staffs who serve their community with pride every day. I also want to thank the Legislative Research Office, especially Tom Diamond, who staffs Health and Human Services and Workforce Development, and Kate Pashati, who staffs the Finance Committee. Of course, my staff, Nicole Harper and James Lewis, for the support that they give to me each and every day, and the hard-working team at CTV who make these hearings possible. And again, the residents who allow us to be able to work for you each and every day to make this one of the best cities in the country to live in and to work in and to play in. Thank you. And the hearing is adjourned. Good night.